Good evening and welcome to our September Cabinet meeting. I have a couple of practical issues to highlight. We have no fire drill planned tonight, so if there is a fire alarm, please make your way out of the building in a calm and orderly fashion, as guided by staff. People with mobility issues should gather in the foyer on the left-hand side as you leave the council chamber, near to the balustrade where assistance will be provided. Toilets are at the far end of the corridors either side of the council chamber, ladies to the left as you leave and gents to the right. The meeting is being livestreamed on the council's YouTube channel. Item one, apologies. I've received apologies from...
The council cabinet sent apologies.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest, please? No, thank you. Item three, public questions and petitions. We've received five questions for this evening. The first is a written question from James Horcett. I will read out the question. I remember reading in the Independent Ombudsman Report last year on housing provision that Norwich City Council wasn't then considering the personal circumstances of tenants when prioritising repairs to their properties. May I ask whether this has now been rectified, and if so, which circumstances are considered during this prioritisation stage to ensure those more vulnerable tenants are not facing undue hardship while awaiting repairs? councillor Jones, would you please provide your reply?
Thank you. As part of the customer trial process of housing repairs, each call handling script is structured for the seriously targeted questions designed to assess and determine the appropriate priority level for the repair request. One of these key questions prompts the call handler to consider the tenant's vulnerability, stating when raising a repair, the tenant's vulnerability needs to be taken into consideration. It refers to the council's vulnerability guidance. This guidance supports us in evaluating how individual circumstances may influence the urgency of the repair, ensuring that vulnerable tenants receive a responsible and appropriate service.
Thank you councillor Jones. As this is a written question, there will be no supplementary question. The second question is from Niall Hubbard on behalf of Acor Norwich. Niall Hubbard, would you please ask your question?
Yes, thank you Chair. My question is what is Norwich City Council doing to actually improve the lives of private renters in our city? And does the council believe there is currently enough protections in place for tenants facing issues of disrepair, dampened mould or abuse from rogue landlords?
Councillor Jones, would you give your reply please?
Thank you. The council is committed to delivering good quality homes for all regardless of tenure. We have concerns about the condition and experience of tenants in the private rented sector in Norwich. Reform in the sector is not over G. Whilst most landlords provide a good service, the private rented sector currently provides the least affordable, poorest quality and most insecure housing of all tenures. We have taken on specialist additional staff and commissioned comprehensive stock condition and tenure intelligence modelling in our private rented sector, with a specific focus on housing conditions and stresses. This will allow us to decide upon and target additional interventions. We welcome the new protections currently going through Parliament in the Renters' Rights Bill and additional enforcement powers that will become available to us. We are reviewing the structure of our private housing enforcement team and look to increase tenant and landlord engagement, undertaking a comprehensive review of our policies and procedures, as well as ensuring we can meet increased demands arising from the new Renters' Rights Act.
Thank you councillor Jones. Niall Hubbard, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, well, thank you councillor Jones for responding. I must ask if this cabinet is as committed as it says it is to improving the conditions for private renters in Norwich. I can only ask how come this cabinet has shown nothing but, to be frank, disdain towards Acor Norwich members, the city's largest union of private social tenants? Hundreds of our members are facing the risks of evil eviction from their homes, they're facing rent increases which force families to move apart and split up, being forced out of their communities, and if you do ever attempt to try to get the proper maintenance and repairs done, which each of us deserve in our tendencies, and you immediately put yourself at risk of facing a private eviction. So I suppose my follow-up question, thank you, is will you finally show local renters the respect they deserve by agreeing to meet with their tenants' union and agreeing to meet with Acor Norwich members, as this cabinet has been invited to attend the upcoming event next Wednesday, Speak Up For Norwich, happening on the 17th of September, 6:30pm at St Edmund's Church? Or does this cabinet believe it does not need to speak to local renters on the conditions that each of us face?
Councillor Jones, would you care to give your response please?
So you asked why I won't engage, why my cabinet colleagues don't wish to meet with you either. I wonder if you've truly implied any self-reflection, and I find this difficult to believe you have. Do you think your behaviour has been truly democratic in keeping principles the union movement that you espouse to? I'll take this opportunity to spell out again, and I'm proud to have support from my cabinet colleagues in this stance. We have affirmed our commitment to debate not hate, and I'd hope that other councils also will remember not to waver from this political game. Eighteen months ago, you targeted me, you harassed me, quite frankly, you scared me. I choose to engage in local politics because I care about the city I call my home. That does not mean I'm without emotion, quite frankly, I think that anyone who's so detached that this would not be hurtful to them does not have the emotional intelligence to make humane compassionate decisions. Each time I answered one of the 150 attempts to phone me that day demanding I follow your demands, some deciding to act to the call or else, was that there was no integrity or transparency in hiding behind just the name Acor, or members refused to give their names, instead using anonymity to intimidate. When you came to this chamber eighteen months ago, you are quite frankly naive or trying to rewrite history to complain. Your intention was not to try to intimidate or scare me, you tried to force me into decisions based on fear, that's not democracy. Many of you obscured your faces, not willing to be accountable for your behaviour, who own it? If you attend any council meeting before, you'll know, I believe in the opposite. I believe in being accountable. When there's something I'm responsible for is not good enough, I will own it, I won't shy away from my responsibilities that yet you hid. You held up placards stating I loved homelessness. To be honest, do you truly believe someone who spends their living free time, their portfolio, pushing to drive up standards in both social and private rented housing, and tonight's bringing forward development to new social housing, really truly loves homelessness? You asked pass the buys to vote if I was dodgy. Did you really give balanced information, or was this again an attempt to personally attack me? Because that's what it was, an attack on my integrity. I'm a nurse with a professional registration, where character is a key component. Your thoughtless actions could have impacted my career. Be honest, what did I do that was dodgy? Not responding to threats and intimidation, to ensuring rules around housing allocation and processes are consistently followed, far from dodgy. I acted and upheld my integrity. Again and again, you demanded I subvert process, I will not compromise my integrity with your intimidation. Unlike you, I'm professional, and as a professional, I'm sure I act on an evidence base, and that's the decisions I make, and that's a core value when I act on behalf of our residents. Your actions say the opposite, pushing us in public to be with intimidation, to be predetermined, jeopardising any future changes this council may want to make to protect private renters. Your actions undermine the very cause you so intagued in, and this is a cause I've been highlighting and taking meaningful steps to address, number for Acor's presence in Norwich. Instead of being collaborative, you've chosen to personally attack the individual who wanted originally to be your partner, how short-sighted. Recently, you said to communication to your members that you should all wait outside County Hall as I left to confront me. Whilst I have no idea why it ever occurred to you I would be there, the message that you would lay in wait, I'm not ashamed to say scared me. You left me wondering what was next with no rhyme or reason on location. Please consider how that might feel. But then, there was a consistent lack of self-awareness that's been staggering. You've had office responses, you've had meetings, you've turned down further offers of these. There was opportunities to engage, but I will not apologise for the fact I do not wish to meet with people who think trying to scare and intimidate me into compliance with their demands is appropriate. I will retain my integrity, and I will not actively engage with people who demonstrate so little insight. Politician or not, I have the right to feel safe, and I'm proud to have the support of my cabinet colleagues in this stance. Thank you.
I think that was the truth, the true truth, and nothing but the truth, and the Cabinet stands for square behind councillor Jones, and I can assure you, unless you learn to treat us with respect and not intimidate and attempt to bully, we will not engage with you. We'll move on to the next question, please. So the third question is from Keth Hurkin. Would you please ask your question?
As they are not here, I'll read out the question. The question is what are council members doing to ensure accountability and transparency with their constituents? Do any of you have plans to regularly engage in constructive dialogue with local people to ensure they have a say in decision-making around key issues?
Thank you, I will respond. Norwich City Council is committed to maintaining high standards of transparency and accountability. We do this in many ways, including residents' magazines, our consultation and engagement platform Get Talking Norwich, and via the publication of key areas of information, including detailed financial information, statement of accounts, annual audit letters and corporate governance reports on our website, ensuring residents can access and scrutinise how public funds have been used. I also know that councillors of all power parties regularly engage with the communities they represent in a variety of ways, using the councillor inquiry system to ensure relevant matters can be considered by council officers. To give some examples, over the past 12 months, we have had 24 projects live on Get Talking Norwich, a consultation and engagement platform. Across all the projects, there were 35,228 people aware, 21,677 of whom were informed, and 9,470 who engaged by participating in a consultation or engagement. We continue to develop Get Talking Norwich, with one such example being the recently added Housing Hub, which encourages engagement and information sharing amongst our tenants. In addition to this, where opportunity allows, we seek to have constructive and meaningful dialogue across the city in person around issues which affect residents. In July, we held 13 roadshows across the city to have conversations with Norwich residents in their neighbourhoods about local government reorganisation. This was alongside workshops with young people and VCSA organisations, and as part of the play strategy, consultation officers were out in 16 parks across the city to talk to young people and families about what play provision is important to them over the coming years. As the questioner is not here, there is not a supplementary question. I'll move on now to the fourth question, it's from Lisa Brown. Lisa Brown, would you please ask your question?
Good evening councillors. We are all aware that we are going through a profound cost of living crisis, with the cost for food and basic goods continuing to spiral whilst wages and benefits stay the same. What is the council doing to provide support for the increasing number of local people in Norwich who have to choose between heating their homes and feeding themselves?
Councillor Padda, would you care to give your answer please?
Thanks for your question. The council recognises the daily financial challenges people face. On that basis, council continues to grant funding, social welfare information, advice and advocacy services through the Financial Inclusion Consortium. The FIC provides free independent support to Norwich residents who are struggling. This could include debt, housing, legal or benefit issues, and the FIC will look to maximise income wherever possible. They may offer budgeting skills, formal debt solutions, benefit applications or benefit challenges tailored to individual needs. In addition to this, the council's in-house budget and money advisers support tenants who are finding it hard to manage, including those dealing with deficit budgets. The council community advice network referral system also ensures that officers can get help and get people to the support they need as quickly as possible. The Norwich Health and Wellbeing Partnership is an opportunity for council to bridge across the various organisations, to build a shared understanding and unified approach to address the health and wellbeing challenges residents face as a result of hard financial times. The Household Support Fund is designed to assist individuals and families facing financial hardship, whether or not they are receiving benefits. Support is aimed at those struggling to afford essentials such as food, utilities or other necessary items. The current Household Support Fund runs until the end of March 2026, and staff can refer eligible residents in need of support with food or help with heating costs into the scheme. For those who have digital access, the council's Cost of Living pages on our website have now been updated to show what additional support is also available. The pages are now condensed and easier to navigate. The council has also recently launched a new vulnerability framework, which acts as a guidance tool for officers to help them identify those who are currently vulnerable or at risk of becoming vulnerable, and how best the council can support these individuals.
Thank you councillor Padda. So, yes, it's Lisa Brown, isn't it? Lisa Brown, would you care to ask your supplementary please?
Thank you councillor Padda. So, given what has been said about wanting to tackle poverty and helping vulnerable people in Norwich, I am so disappointed that this Labour Cabinet continues to refuse to meet with people of Acor Norwich and discuss the biggest expense most regular people face, which is their housing. Rent alone takes up nearly half of most people's incomes, and in return for this huge amount of money we're forced to pay, sees us living in private rentals covered in mould...
Apologies, could you ask a question please?
I'm getting there.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to ask a question, not to make a speech.
It's not a speech, it is a question, and I have a minute in which to ask it. We live in private rentals covered in mould, damp, disrepair and with the risk of revenge evictions if you try to speak up. I should know, I have had my car vandalised thrice by an associate of my landlord, and I've had one landlord think it's acceptable to put a paddling pool in the loft as a form of repair. Will this Labour Council finally commit to meeting with Acor Norwich members and talking to us ordinary people? We are your constituents, we need renting protections in the city desperately, like landlord licensing, or will you continue to pander to the rogue landlords preying on our communities? It's a yes or no question, will you meet with us?
Can I refer this to the monitoring officer please? I don't think this is a supplementary question related to this question.
Thank you councillor. It will be for you to decide whether you wish to respond to the question or not to respond, you do have that discretion.
I think there's a basic principle, if you want to sit down and have civilised conversations with people, and we do that, groups all over the city all the time, you have to behave in a civilised way and not attempt to bully and intimidate people. All the things councillor Jones talked about, we've got the evidence, we can prove that you all did, you did what she said. So if you're prepared, if you're prepared to engage with us respectfully and constructively, then we'll engage with you. But as long as you continue to employ the tactics you've been employing, we will not meet with you. It's a very simple principle, you've got the choice. Let's move on now to question five from Izzy Jarvis. Izzy Jarvis, would you please ask your question?
Thank you Chair. How can Norwich City Council continue to justify the continued use of bailiffs to collect on council tax debts for people who are already struggling to pay for basic goods? The use of bailiffs does nothing to stop poverty or raise funds for the council, as more money is spent on hiring out contractors than what is collected from people in debt, which also traumatises already vulnerable families by sending bailiffs to their doors. Will Norwich City Council commit to ending the use of bailiffs to collect council tax?
Councillor Harper, would you please give your response?
Thank you Chair. Norwich City Council fully recognises the pressures residents are facing and the difficulties that debt can cause. Our starting point is always to support people to manage their payments and prevent debt from escalating. Because the council takes the issue of debt and vulnerability extremely seriously, when we appointed two new enforcement agents in October last year, we carefully considered how they work with vulnerable residents. We've also introduced a corporate debt strategy, policy and a vulnerability framework approved by Cabinet in June this year to ensure we take a fair and supportive approach. This approach includes making early contacts and offering flexible payment options, using standard financial statements to assess affordability, signposting referring residents to trusted independent advice services such as the Norfolk Community Advice Network or NCAP, offering breathing space and pausing recovery action where people are engaging with their advice, and working across the council to ensure that people with multiple debts are supported and enjoyed that way. Not passing debts to enforcement agents where we know the customer is vulnerable. Our contracted enforcement agents must follow strict legislation, and they use specialist teams to provide additional support when someone's vulnerability is identified. In many cases, these debts then return directly to us so we can manage them more appropriately. Enforcement agents are only ever used as a last resort. Before that point, we will always seek to engage with residents, discuss affordable solutions and signpost independent advice and support agencies where this may help. In many cases, this allows us to take a different and more supportive approach. It's important to know that the council does not pay enforcement agents for recovering council tax. Any fees charged are strictly set out in national legislation. Where someone is unwilling to pay council tax despite other options being offered, such as actions and benefits or earnings, the use of enforcement agents may be necessary. Our primary aim is not to punish people in hardship, but to support our residents to get back on track financially, while still meeting our duty to collect income that funds essential services for Norwich.
Thank you councillor Harper. Izzy Jarvis, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you councillor for your answer. With all of this in mind, if your council actually means what you've just said and clearly have things in place that seem to be trying to help people, I might ask again why you're refusing to be with Acor Norwich, which has launched a national campaign for a bailiff free Britain, and with Acor Norwich's continued campaign to see the protections renters desperately need being introduced locally, will you commit to meeting with... it's again, it's the largest union of low and middle income people and renters. Will you commit to meeting with our members to hear what they have to say, or will you continue to ignore us and act like you are too good to meet with everyday people?
People that know me know that I don't walk away from difficult meetings and that I've been, since I've been appointed to Cabinet, I've made it my business to go and have the hard conversations with residence groups, with individuals and listen to what they have to say. I've made myself incredibly accessible and I'll continue to do that, and I'll always look for ways of finding solutions for some of the big challenges that the city faces. What I won't do is engage with people who believe in using intimidation, I won't meet with people that doxxed my colleague and my friend and put her personal safety in jeopardy, and that have come along to disrupt and interrupt and make participating in public life harder. It is difficult to be a woman in public life, particularly in the current climate, and actually, I think we should take a good hard look at what it looks like to be shouting at women in public, so no, I won't meet with people that behave like that.
That would be councillor Harper.
Not good enough. One of my members is a woman and you shout her down because you were trying to ask her a question, you didn't do that to the man!
That's questions to Cabinet members. No questions have been received, so I'll now move on to the minutes which have been circulated. So everybody had a chance to see them? Yeah, okay, thank you. Can we confirm that these are an accurate record of the meeting on the 9th of July 2025, including the exempt section? Just to say that if any member wishes to discuss the exempt minutes, we will need to go into the closed session, so please do stay now. Does anyone wish to discuss the... no, below the 9 section of the minutes, in which case I propose that they are an accurate record. Do I have a second there? Anybody? Councillor Jones, thank you. Move to the vote, are those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item six, corporate performance report 2025/26 for quarter one. I will move the report. So for the reporting period, information across corporate performance, finance and risk elements are presented to Cabinet through three quarterly reports and one annual report. For quarter one, overall performance remains steady. Sixty-eight per cent of KPIs are on or above target, 11% show early warning signs, 21% have reached a level where intervention is required, and one KPI is pending validation and will be reported in quarter two. Areas requiring improvement. KPIs linked to processing times for new housing benefit claims, the percentage of council housing rent collected and the average re-let times for council homes require sustained attention and mitigating actions are in place across all areas to improve performance in the coming months. In terms of performance improvements, there have been positive developments in council tax and business rates collection, both of which are currently ahead of target, supported by proactive arrears recovery and early payment initiatives. Planning decisions remain strong with 80% of appeals upheld. Additionally, digital engagement continues to grow and has exceeded its targets. We are currently undertaking a comprehensive review of KPI targets and intervention thresholds to ensure alignment with national standards and benchmarking data. As part of this process, the following amendments have been made and approved by the portfolio holder. KP 101, average number of days taken to process housing benefit claims from point of receipt to notification of entitlement. The target has been adjusted from 19.5 days to 21 days to reflect the national average processing time in England. This change ensures our performance expectations remain realistic and benchmarked against sector norms. KP 109, the percentage of households owed a homelessness prevention duty in accordance with the Homelessness Reduction Act, where the duty was ended due to suitable accommodation being secured. The target has been increased to 75%, setting a higher performance standard. This adjustment supports our proactive approach to service delivery by enabling earlier identification of performance dips and ensuring continued focus on securing suitable accommodation outcomes. For a detailed overview of all performance data for quarter one, including commentary on progress, please refer to Appendix A in the report. The recommendation is that Cabinet is asked to review progress on the KPIs for this quarter, which is the first quarter of course. Do I have a second please? Claire, councillor Gidman, thank you. Does any member of Cabinet wish to speak? Councillor Jones?
I just wanted to address one of the areas that has identified for improvement, which is the around void turnarounds. And I think it's important to note that this is an area that all councils are finding that potentially the target that we've been working to is potentially not realistic in the current climate and in the condition of properties that are being returned to us. So I think we need to understand, is our benchmarking accurate? So we've got some work we're doing at the moment to understand actually what's happening at other councils in terms of their targets. Our void turnaround times have improved dramatically, and I'm incredibly proud of the work that's been done on the team with that. But I think we need to be clear about the quality of properties we're receiving back, which has been exceptionally poor, and particularly properties that have been tented for incredibly long periods of time. So there's a number of bits of work going on around that to understand, one, how we can potentially reduce that time anyway, but also, is the targets that we're using actually reflect... actually reflective of what's going on at all councils across the country with stock? So that's a piece of work that I look forward to updating on because I think it's important that we're using realistic information. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jones. Councillor Kidman, which is to speak?
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to draw attention to KP101, which is average days taken to process housing benefit claims. The target reflects the increasing complexity of remaining caseloads falling migration housing benefit to universal credit. It's resulted in more time consuming casework and increased volumes of data from DWP and we're also experiencing delays in receiving necessary data from housing providers, which contributes to longer processing times. I have met with benefits officers and I have every confidence in them addressing this and working with the team on clearing these audit claims, so I just thought I'd mention that.
Thank you councillor Kidman. Any other cabinet member wish to speak? No. As councillor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. I'll now move to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. Item seven, Budget Monitoring Report 2025-26 Quarter One. Could I ask councillor Harper please to move the report?
Thank you Chair, it'll be brief. We have a strong record of financial management, which has been key to delivering high quality services to our residents throughout the last 15 years, despite the very challenging circumstances and challenging and probably the most challenging local government finances in history. The Quarter One outturn forecast indicates that the council continues to perform in this way. General Fund and the Housing Revenue Account are currently forecasting underspends for 2025 to 2026. However, prudent management will continue to be emphasised, recognising that the financial environment continues to be challenging and that we can't afford to be complacent. The annual financial cycle is explicitly recognised as being interdependent, an interdependent set of processes. So our officers seek to link lessons learned by looking back at previous financial year to the budget management of the current financial year and onwards to the budget setting for future financial years. This budget management report is therefore an important contribution to this cycle of learning and to the development of the council's financial management approach and I commend it to you.
Thank you very much councillor Harper. Do I have a second there please? Councillor Jones, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the item? No, okay, thank you very much. As councillor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We'll now move to the vote on the item, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item eight, The Good Employer Charter, Response to the Recommendations of the Scrutiny Committee. Could I ask please councillor Padda to move the report?
Thanks Chair, I'm pleased to present this report to the Cabinet for consideration, which addresses the recommendations made by the scrutiny committee during their meeting on the 24th April 2025, where they explored the introduction of a good employer charter. The Cabinet is now tasked with agreeing its response to each of these recommendations. The report outlines the council's current good practice, including effective engagement with trade unions, the resource implications of implementing a good employer charter and the feasibility of incorporating the charter into the council's procurement processes. The report also considers the potential for the new mayoral combined accounting authority to take forward the initiative in the future. Section four outlines the recommended response to each point made by the scrutiny committee and I would like to move these responses for the Cabinet's agreement.
Thank you councillor Padda. Do I have a second there please? Councillor Hampton, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? We don't have any questions from political group leaders on this item, I'm aware that the Chair of Scrutiny Committee is here. If he would like to say the word?
Yeah, thank you very much Chair. Scrutiny Committee is meeting on Thursday, so no doubt we will consider your considerations of that. The only thing I would, just one very minor point, I thought it was an interesting linguistic flex in the recommendation three. Scrutiny Committee asked the board of NCSEL to consider adopting a good employer charter and the Cabinet response is that we cannot compel NCSEL. Nowhere in any of the scrutiny documentation does it use the word compel, so I was intrigued as to where that arrived from.
Councillor Padda?
I will certainly take that away and look at it. It could be, I'm not going to even hazard a guess, but I will take it away and look at it, thanks.
Yeah, thanks for the question, thank you councillor Padda. So, we will now move to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item eight is Making Norwich Truly Accessible Committee, Recommendations to Cabinet. I will ask councillor Padda to move the report please.
Thank you very much Chair. So on behalf of Cabinet, I extend a heartfelt congratulations to the Making Norwich Truly Accessible scrutiny committee and task and furnish group, although that's a matter, all their outstanding report and truly insightful and valuable recommendations proposed. I would like to express our gratitude to all contributors acknowledging the substantial time and patience invested in researching and delivering this report and their unwavering commitment to the issues discussed. Cabinet shares in this commitment to provide truly accessible and inclusive services and environments for the benefits of residents, employees and stakeholders alike. We continue to support and drive our collective ambition to transform Norwich into the best possible place for everyone, putting quality and inclusion at the forefront of all of our initiatives, as outlined in our community led plan. As an example of this, we are proud to share that the Lord Mayor's Weekend has been awarded bronze accreditation under the Attitude is Everything Live Events Access Charter. This recognition highlights our commitment to making events more inclusive, not just for attendees but also for performers, staff, contractors and all visitors. This is a significant milestone for the council's ongoing work to improve accessibility and sets a positive benchmark for future events across the city. With regards to the report of its 28 recommendations, Cabinet is pleased to confirm that 24.5 are accepted and agreed or are already in progress. Only 3.5 recommendations have been declined primarily due to resourcing constraints and lack of robust evidence. In detail on remuneration, there is no evidence suggesting remunerating participation effectively solicits engagement. There are questions that could be answered on what kinds of participation could be compensated, but these are questions coming to light on government spending more generally. Rolling Act programmes to remunerate participation will set a precedent which will be difficult to manage and potentially lead to people abusing the system. On the research project, given council resources are constrained, this is an interesting piece that could be considered holistically under a new unitary authority. Finally, on the audit report, building regulations already considers accessibility, this could be duplication on the grounds, there are grounds to think about accessibility to areas in the public realm, but again, council already has policies and good practice in place around that. Cabinet's response in the result of significant consultation and engagement with relevant offices and external stakeholders whose expertise in their specific areas has fostered a comprehensive understanding of the viability and implications of the recommendations, I'd like to move the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Padda. Do I have a second there please? Councillor Harper, thank you. Councillor Galvin, you chaired the group, would you like to speak for a couple of minutes?
Thank you very much councillor Stenhouse Chair, I'd be glad to and thank you very much for introducing you, councillor Padda. Yeah, the report was very much co-authored, so I'd like to echo councillor Padda's thanks to all the outside bodies who came together to contribute and give their experience and recommendations and to the officers who worked really diligently to support us, particularly Leonie, but many others and to the cabinet member at the time, Adam Giles, who was cited throughout the process and kept him out of everything. Our aim was to make Norwich truly inclusive because wherever you go with a person with access needs in the city, you face barriers and it's not fair and it's not good for the economy either. I think we should all acknowledge here today that the Norwich Access Group has worked hard for many, many years to finally be getting to the point where real change is happening, change that technically the council's responsibility, our responsibility, the job of people who signed up to serve the citizens. From what we saw as part of our research, I think the council needs to apologise that that has not happened effectively so far, which is why this charity and now an entire partnership with larger charities has come together to do the job that the council hasn't historically achieved really effectively. It's not alone in that, it's across the board failure in our society, I think, but I do think we need to acknowledge it. I'm very glad to see so many recommendations accepted, but I have a straight up rejection, to have that straight up rejection of financial support is pretty disappointing, especially under the current system of pressure on disabled people, even with, when even with consultation at no cost over the new Hay Hill site, there's only one wheelchair space there. So you know, even when there is consultation now, it's clear we're nowhere near where we need to be yet. How are disabled people supposed to work, socialise and contribute to society when there's so little support and what support there is is often still tokenistic? This report helps us be more aware of that, aware of the fact that our reports have been emailed out, even our EDI report was embarrassing enough not accessible. So I'm really glad we've grasped the nettle on it and I thank again the Inclusive Norwich Partnership for coming to the table and working so very hard. For the price of 1.5 full-time employees, the council has three organisations, about seven people, huge network, all working together to improve Norwich for everyone. So that's a really good bargain and thanks for doing that, I'll come into a close. Disabled people's organisations, just an answer to the question about remuneration, disabled people's organisations, what we found out in this report, they've seen a huge lapse in recent years, put simply because they're worn out. They do all that work for nothing, it's our job to support them and I hope that we can rethink the approach shown by the selective listening Cabinet has shown to some of the recommendations, just those ones in the report and I'd be very happy to meet you to look at the evidence and to see if we can find a way through that to be truly leading on that. All that said, I'm glad we took the time and that this is here today and I really do urge you to reflect and continue to reflect on building in proper access for all people and I'd be glad to meet you to monitor progress and report back to scrutiny on that, thank you again.
So, does any cabinet member wish to speak? Councillor Padda?
A quick one, really in response to apologising. I, with all due respect councillor Galvin, I do take those comments, but I think that it's always about learning and improving. I think, you know, the apology thing I don't think is necessary because this is, you know, we are, we are visibly improving. Out of those 28 recommendations, we've taken on more 24.5 and the others are legitimate. The others that were turned down were legitimate, they were considered legitimately and the evidence around that. So I think that, you know, very happy to meet, I think we just need to build, build on the evidence and go forward and continue to make the lives of everyone better. Thank you.
Councillor Harper?
Thank you. I just very briefly wanted to just reflect on the, on the process that we undertook and I think I thanked councillor Galvin previously for her excellent chairing of the task and finishes. Certainly one of the more, one of the really rewarding things I've been involved in and I think one of the best things about the whole process was hearing from so many, so many of the community about, about, you know, their experiences and their views about what we needed to, you know, to do moving forward. So I just, I just wanted to place on record my thanks to them as well for their involvement and contribution.
Thank you councillor Harper. Councillor Kidman?
Thank you Chair. I just, I wanted to say I'm delighted that we've been achieved, that we've achieved bronze accreditation for the Lord Mayor's Weekend. It's a, it's a really significant achievement and want to thank everyone for the work that's been undertaken that aims to fulfil our ambition to make Norwich a truly accessible city.
Thank you councillor Kidman. If no other cabinet member wishes to speak, as councillor Cat has sent written apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. So we'll now move to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 11, Treasury Management Review and Outturn 2024-25. Could I please ask councillor Harper to move the report?
Thank you very much, I'll be brief again. So this report provides details of treasury management activity for the 2024-25 financial year to the 31st of March 2025 and it highlights compliance with the council's treasury management strategy and policies which have previously been approved by council. The report recommendation asks Cabinet to note the treasury management activity undertaken in the financial year to 31st of March 2025 and to recommend the report for approval by council. Council has adopted the SIPF code of practice for treasury management in the public sector and the Prudential Code for Capital Finance in local authorities and operates its treasury management activity in compliance with these codes. The codes place responsibility on members to review and scrutinise treasury management policy and activity against prudential indicators. This report sets out a range of indicators and highlights that there are no breaches to alert to. This council remains significantly internally borrowed and has continued to repay maturing debt without refinancing. Cash balances were invested to enable the council to maximise its returns in the current interest rate environment and during 2024, 2025, council's cash investments returned over £5.3 million worth of investment income. Council's treasury management activity continues to be monitored against the wider economic backdrop and interest rate environment in accordance with the council's treasury management advisers and the council's treasury management strategy. I'd like to place on record my thanks to officers for all of their hard work in this respect. I'm pleased to report that this report, I'm pleased that this report illustrates the positive management of our cash balance and debt portfolio and I endorse the recommendation set out in the report.
Thank you councillor Harper. Do I have a second there please? Councillor Jones, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? Clearly not. We've received no questions from political group leaders for this item, so we'll now move to the vote, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 12 is Risk Management Strategy and Policy. Once again, could I ask councillor Harper to move the report?
Thank you. Thank you. So again, I'll try to be brief. This council is committed to effective risk management and delivering best practice, to which end a review has been undertaken of the council's strategy and policy. This policy recognises that risk is ever-present in the modern world and that risks need to be managed in a proactive manner, recognising that in certain circumstances, risks cannot be eliminated and that it would be uneconomic to remove risks entirely. This means that there needs to be a proactive approach to understanding and management of risks and that, an approach that recognises when a risk should be mitigated and managed or in some cases tolerated. The proposed risk appetite statement sets out for each of the five main types of risk facing public sector organisations, namely qualitative service, financial, regulatory, workforce, reputational and relationship risks. And this will inform future assessments of risk, which in turn will then inform decision making and the actions designed to mitigate, manage or accept risks. This strategy and policy has been endorsed by the Audit Committee prior to coming to Cabinet for adoption and officers have begun work to redesign the risk assessment templates that would reflect this strategy and policy with a view to presenting an updated register with effect from Quarter Three, which would be reported to members in the new calendar year. And again, I'd just like to place on record my thanks to the Chair of Scrutiny Committee And again, I'd just like to place on record my thanks to officers for all of their hard work in this regard.
Thank you, councillor Harper. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Jones, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? No. So as councillor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 13 is Adoption of the Hackney Carriage and Private Hire Vehicle Policy Drivers and Operational Standards. May I ask councillor Giles, please, to move the report?
Item 1 of 7 for me tonight. The report summarises changes to the Hackney Carriage and Private Hire Driver and Operator Licensing Policies as set out in the appendix to the Cabinet Report in accordance with the five-yearly review process. Table 1 sets out a number of changes to improve passenger safety. These are mandatory driver subscription to the DBS update service, the requirement of a basic DBS check for all non-driving staff and company directors in the trade, the maintenance of a register by business of all staff working in the trade, the formalising of joint enforcement with neighbouring councils, the obligation for drivers to undertake Group II medical assessments, safeguarding with freshers training on renewal of licence, the prohibition of vaping in vehicles, broad alignment with the Higher Institute of Licensing Standards for previous convictions, city council penalty points to be valid for three years, city council penalty points for mobile phone use while driving to increase to six, to increase checks on driver DBS/DVLA status from on renewal to six monthly and to mandate the acceptance of both cash and card payments. CCTV use in vehicles will become optional for licence holders. The knowledge test and the distinction between Hackney Carriage and PHV licences is retained. The consultation had an impressive 230 responses, roughly split 50/50 between drivers and operators and the wider public. The policy went to June Licensing Committee and it was approved June Regulatory Committee and it was approved, no recommendations to Cabinet for amendments. I will finish by thanking Tiffany Bentley and Vicky Hops for all their hard work producing the revised policy and recommend the revised policies for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Padda, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? No, we're all satisfied. Councillor Cat has sent apologies and a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. Item 14 is Residential Caravan Licensing Model Standards. Could I please ask councillor Giles to move the report?
Thank you. As set out in the report, Norwich City Council owns the freehold for a residential caravan site for gypsy roamers and travellers on Swanton Road. Historically, this has been managed by Norfolk County Council. The site has now been leased to Broadland Housing Association to manage and this has necessitated the establishment of the Residential Caravan Site Licensing Model Standards. We have taken account of the national model standards for multi-occupancy sites in relation to developing our local model standards for single occupant, often GRT sites such as Swanton Road. When attaching model standards to site licences, each site in relevant conditions must continue to be assessed on a site-by-site basis on its own merits. Those of the GRT ethnicity face significant inequalities in health and educational outcomes. As ever, decent housing lies at the heart of improving these inequalities in outcomes and these standards seek to support this community by ensuring that their accommodation is safe, adequately spaced and hygienic while respecting their culture and traditions. There were no formal responses to the public consultation on these standards. The policy went to June Licensing Committee and it was approved, no recommendations to Cabinet for amendments. I would again finish by thanking Tiffany Bentley and Vicky Hops for all their hard work producing the policy and recommend the policy for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Kidman, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? Note, in which case, as councillor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 15 is Purpose-Built Student Accommodation Supplementary Planning Document. Could I ask councillor Giles, again, please, to move the report?
I'm sick of the sound of it. This report brings a Norwich-specific purpose-built student accommodation supplementary planning document for Cabinet approval before going to full council later this month. Since we established a PBSA, Purpose-Built Student Accommodation Advice Note in 2019, a significant amount of PBSA has been built in Norwich and the Greater Norwich Local Plan was endorsed last year. GNLP Policy 5 regarding homes contains support for PBSA away from the UEA campus, where the need for development is justified by the current or proposed size of Norwich's higher education institutions, subject to a number of specific criteria being met. As such, the 2019 PBSA guidance note is now out of date and this SBD updates the evidence base and guidance for developers, educational institutions and us as the local planning authority. The SBD takes account of the most recent evidence study published in November 2024. The key finding from this evidence study is that the current stock and expected pipeline is more than sufficient to comfortably meet the future demand of students for 2038/39, including ensuring an element of choice within the market. While there is an argument that increasing PBSA delivery further may reduce pressure on the private rental sector in the wider community, analysis of relative affordability and factors influencing students' decision-making about accommodation suggests that this outcome is not considered realistic. Given the risk of an oversaturated PBSA market with possible repercussions to occupancy levels, provider finances and student quality of life, it is concluded that there is no need for further PBSA beyond the existing supply and current pipeline. Notwithstanding this, given the possibility for demand to change over time, the SBD provides applicants, where they do submit an application, must submit an assessment of need as part of a future planning application. Applicants must meaningfully engage with Norwich's higher education institutions, which should ideally result in their support, nomination agreement or partnership. And higher education institutions will be consultees to all such applications. Section 5 of the SBD sets out the factors that the city council will consider in assessing a PBSA planning application where need is demonstrated by the applicant. These include location, scale, external building design, external amenity and landscape design, internal building design, cycle of storage, management, provision of a mix of accommodation and sustainability and energy consumption. In addition to this, developments will still need to satisfy the criteria set out in DM13 of Norwich City Council's Development Management Policies regarding communal development and multiple accommodation. The draft SBD went through a five-week public consultation. Some changes have been made as set out in the report in response to comments from statutory consultees, agents on behalf of developers and higher education institutions. Overall, 80% of respondents strongly agreed or agreed the existing and pipeline supply PBSA in Norwich is sufficient to meet demand. I would conclude by thanking both Joy Brown and Mike Burrow, who's here today, for their brilliant hard work on the SBD and propose we approve the SBD to go forwards to full council later this month. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Jones, thank you. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? No, everybody's content, good. We've received no questions from political group leaders for this item, so we'll move straight to the vote. All those in favour? Are you voting in favour of your report, Adam? Yeah, okay, thank you, that's unanimous. Item 16, I guess you're just getting a, yeah, spot of water before you continue. Item 16, Review of the Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework. Councillor Giles, could I ask you, please, to move the report?
Yes, thank you. This report brings the revised Norfolk Strategic Planning Framework for Cabinet approval. The Norfolk Strategic Planning Member Forum and the Greater Norwich Development Partnership have both approved the NSPF, subject to ratification from individual local authorities. The NSPF went to Sustainable Development Panel in July, which recommended approval without recommendations for amendments and it is coming to Cabinet today ahead of going to full council later this month. Need to check that. The framework is a requirement to meet our duty to cooperate as planning authorities. When assessing the soundness of a local plan, the planning inspector's first step is to assess whether the relevant authority/authorities are complying with their duty to cooperate. A number of local authorities have sadly failed this step nationally in recent months. The NSPF is managed by a jointly funded project manager based at City Hall. All Norfolk local authorities contribute £10,000 per annum towards the NSPF, salary costs and evidence studies. The primary revisions to the NSPF are as follows. A review of the vision and objectives and a review of the agreements, which includes the removal on agreements completed or no longer relevant. A full review of all sections to ensure all information is correct and up to date. A full review of the economic information in light of Norfolk County Council's economic strategy, which replaces the previous LEP strategies. Updates to the infrastructure section to take account of new information include new anguine water plans, the Water Resources East Plan, new flood risk data, the new Norfolk Strategic Infrastructure Delivery Plan, the updated JIRAMs Action Plan, biodiversity net gain and local nature recovery strategy. A new section has been created to cover nutrient neutrality and there is a reflection of the new standard methodology for calculating housing need. The new standard methodology for calculating housing need means there is a 48% increase in our housing target for Norfolk and 34% for Greater Norwich, so not insignificant. Appendix 1 to the Cabinet Report sets out in summary how the changes to the NSPF will impact Norwich. Pages 2 to 7 of the NSPF itself summarises the agreement. I would draw colleagues' attention to the proposed spatial vision for Norfolk as set out under Agreement 2 on pages 12 to 13 of the NSPF. And I'll read this as follows. The spatial vision statement is, by the middle of the 21st century, Norfolk will be increasingly recognised nationally for having a strong and vibrant economy, providing high-quality economic opportunities for residents in urban and rural areas. Its settlements and key infrastructure will be physically resilient to the impacts of climate change. The natural, built and historic environments will be enhanced through the regeneration of settlements, safeguarding and enhancement of current assets and networks, improving both biodiversity and the quality of life and health for residents. Housing needs will be met in full in socially inclusive communities. The county will be better connected by having good transport links to major cities in the UK and Europe and excellent digital connectivity. A good relationship between homes and jobs will help minimise the need to travel and residents will have choice about how they meet their demand for local travel. That's the spatial vision statement for Norfolk. I would draw colleagues' attention also to the summary of the proposed shared objectives as set out under Agreement 3 on pages 13 to 15 of the NSPF. These come under the subheadings of realising the economic potential of Norfolk and its people, reducing Norfolk's greenhouse gas emissions and improving air quality, as well as reducing the impact from exposure to and effects of climate change, addressing housing needs in Norfolk, improving the quality of life and health for all the population of Norfolk and finally improving and preserving Norfolk's rich and biodiverse environment. I would like to finish by thanking Trevor Wigger in particular for all his hard work on the revised NSPF. To summarise, I propose Cabinet approve the revised NSPF. And I can't remember whether it's going to full council later this month, so I'd have to defer on that. It is, Sarah's nodding, so I was correct and I wrote this. Yeah, so approve, subject to full council later this month.
Thank you, councillor Giles. Do I have a second to please? Councillor Padda. Does any cabinet member wish to speak? I think Adam has said it all, there's nothing to add. We've received no questions from political group leaders for this item, so we'll now move straight to a vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item 7 is the Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy Supplementary Planning Document Draft. Councillor Giles, could I ask you, please, to move the report?
I'm gonna have to pick the right page for this.
It's okay, you've got a lot to juggle there.
This item seeks members' thoughts on the draft Greater Norwich, seek Cabinet members' approval, on the draft Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy SBD going to full council later this month for a six-week public consultation period. By way of background, the Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy was produced in the previous civic year and was endorsed by the Greater Norwich Growth Board in March of this year. This strategy seeks to provide a framework for planning and prioritising green infrastructure to support sustainable growth to 2038. It is to be used to guide the location, scale and typology of green infrastructure, identify deficiencies in provision, identify opportunities for provision and set out a strategic green infrastructure network across Greater Norwich. In a non-planning context, the strategy is being used by the Greater Norwich Growth Board to evidence and assess bids for infrastructure investment funding. This Greater Norwich-wide SBD has the purpose of giving stronger material planning weight to the Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy when assessing planning applications' compliance with the Greater Norwich Local Plan Vision, GNLP Policy 2 concerning sustainable development, Policy 3 concerning environmental protection and enhancement, Policy 4 concerning strategic infrastructure, Policy 6 concerning the economy and Policy 7 concerning the strategies for the growth areas. The SBD should be used by developers to assist with how proposed multifunctional and connected green infrastructure in a planning application strengthens and enhances the map network of both strategic green infrastructure corridors for integrating and optimising natural places, i.e. nature-rich habitats to support nature recovery and enhance climate resilience, and active places, i.e. accessible green spaces supporting residents' physical health and mental wellbeing. And secondly, priority green infrastructure corridors around the key growth locations where there is expected to be greatest need for accessible green space to support sustainable growth. I should stress that the GNGI Strategy and Delivery Plan themselves, appendix to the SBD, have, as set out, already been endorsed to broader purposes and have not been amended for the purpose of this SBD. While comments and consultation responses relating to the strategy itself will not lead to changes to these documents, they will be taken into account in implementation review processes. I would like to finish by thanking Charlotte River and Mike Burrow for their excellent hard work leading on production of this SBD for the city council. Formally proposed, we approve the draft SBD. I'm not sure if Emma wants to say anything about the strategy itself.
I mean, in the interest of time, there's probably not too much more to say. I think you gave a really good outline of the strategy in the context of the... I think you gave a really good outline of the strategy in the context of the purpose of the supplementary planning document. The best thing I can say really for anyone interested in the strategy itself is probably to go online to the GNGB website and have a look at the story map that they've developed, which is a really good representation of the evidence base it uses. You can overlay the priorities, opportunities of existing infrastructure. So for anyone interested in learning more about the strategy, that's publicly available for residents, decision makers, members alike, to developers to go and have a look at.
Thank you, Councilor Giles and Councilor Hampton. Does any other Cabinet member wish to speak? Councilor Padda.
Yes, very briefly. I did cast a critical eye over the report yesterday. I found it really insightful and interesting. I would urge anyone and everyone to go online and have a read. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Padda. Any other Cabinet member wish to...? No? Okay. As Councilor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. So we'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Councilor Giles, are you ready for the next one? Item eighteen is Greater Norwich Local Plan Policy Two Sustainable Communities Draft Supplementary Planning Document. Councilor Giles, could I ask you to move the report?
Yes. So this item is to seek Cabinet's approval on the draft Greater Norwich Wide SBD for Greater Norwich Local Plan Policy Two concerning sustainable communities, which will go to full council later this month before a six-week public consultation period. While all developments are required to comply with GNLP Policy Two, the SBD sets guidance for applicants of developments over a certain scale on submission of supporting statements required to illustrate their compliance. These are statements of community involvement covering master planning, health impact assessments, delivery statements and sustainability statements. With regards to statements of community involvement, the SBD states that they should report on what engagement has taken place, what feedback they are receiving from the community and how the comments received are shaping the results of the planning application. The SBD encourages developers to be frank about community concerns they feel unable to resolve through the subsequent planning application. The SBD should be read in conjunction with Norwich's Statement of Community Involvement, last revised in January of this year. Secondly, the SBD sets out that health impact assessments must illustrate how the healthcare needs of the new development will be provided for. This should include an assessment of the current healthcare provision in the area and identification of how additional healthcare needs created by the development will be met, taking account of the likely demographic characteristics of the residents. In relation to delivery statements and supporting timely delivery of development, the SBD states that applicants must include information concerning site ownership, land assembly and legal agreements, intentions to market the site to home builders or commercial end users, and leading times from permission to start on site, discharging planning conditions, mobilising construction contractors and forecasts for annual completions. The SBD provides the planning authorities will contact relevant successful applicants on at least an annual basis about the progress of consented schemes. It further sets out that in exercising legal powers to bring about strategically significant development, regardless of how to any change of circumstances which may have impacted delivery, including economic factors. The SBD's primary focus is on the content of sustainability statements to illustrate the proposed development is compliant with Policy Two. GNLP Policy Two encourages, but does not oblige, the use of the latest iteration of the Building for a Healthy Life design tool and any equivalent successor. Section four, table two of the SBD sets out the information required to demonstrate compliance with the 10 key policy requirements of GNLP Policy Two. These are access to services and facilities, new technologies, green infrastructure, efficient use of land/densities, design, inclusive and safe communities, environmental protection, flood risk, water efficiency and water quality and energy. Section four, table two, is purposely relatively light on detail, placing the onus on applicants to illustrate how their proposed development is compliant, directing applicants to relevant external links, rather than putting the burden on us to seek to provide for every eventuality. I will stress some elements where the body of the SBD text itself expands on GNLP Policy Two. In relation to access to services and facilities, it provides for a services and movement map showing any onsite services and movement routes across the development site to services both onsite and nearby. In relation to green infrastructure, the SBD stresses that the great majority of green infrastructure provided under GNLP Policy Two should be onsite. The sustainability statement should include any active green roofs, rain gardens and blue green walls, the climate resilience of plants used in planting schemes and maintenance arrangements to ensure successful establishment and longevity of planting schemes. In relation to inclusive and safe communities, the sustainability statement should illustrate how secured by design principles have been reflected to design our crime in the development. Such measures may include buildings around the edges of spaces, active frontages along the edges of these spaces such as entrances onto the space and windows overlooking them, natural surveillance of inside buildings so useless spaces may feel overlooked, and positive reasons for residents to spend time in the spaces for activities. In relation to environmental protection, depending on location, a noise impact assessment may be required with appropriate mitigation measures, which may include acoustic barriers/fencing, noise insulation in buildings and landscape buffers. The SBD encourages modern methods of construction to minimise off-site waste arises from developments. Finally, in relation to water efficiency, the SBD reiterates that we sadly remain bound by the evidenced optional higher water efficiency requirement of 110 litres per person per day as set out in the 2024 building regs. The SBD does however make reference to the June 2025 guidance for the east of England, which suggests higher water efficiency requirements are needed in the east of England, and the SBD stresses that meeting these higher standards in developments is encouraged, but regrettably not obliged. I'll finish by thanking Joy Brown and Mike Barrow for their fantastic hard work leading on the production of the SBD for the City Council and formally propose the recommendation that Cabinet approves the draft SBD to go forward to full council later this month and public consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very comprehensive. Thank you for that, Adam. Do I have a second, please? Councilor Jones. Does any Cabinet member wish to speak? No, what is he going to think? Adam has said it all. As Councilor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. So we'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Now, item nineteen, which is Nutrient Mitigation Fund Loan to Expedite Norwich Mitigation Scheme, very important. Councilor Giles, again, please.
Please, this is the last one.
Oh, no.
Sure, I could speak for long. This report, this is the shortest. This report seeks approval in principle from Cabinet for a £3 million bridging loan facility from the Norfolk Nutrient Mitigation Fund to invest in the Norwich Nutrient Neutrality Mitigation Scheme, subject to confirmation from the section 151 officer on the optimum way to finance the necessary phosphorus credits. The Norfolk Nutrient Neutrality Mitigation Fund was a £19 million grant awarded Broadland District Council to unlock planning developments stalled due to nutrient neutrality obligations imposed by Natural England in relevant catchment areas across Norfolk in March 2022. I currently represent the City Council on the Norfolk Nutrient Neutrality Mitigation Fund member panel, and the member panel approved this £3 million loan facility at the June meeting, should this be required. The loan facility would only be drawn down as required, and there is no obligation to borrow the full £3 million. Should it be necessary to draw on the loan facility, borrowing will be repaid from phosphorus credits required by developers to offset the additional phosphorus load of new developments. It is highlighted that the third and fourth stages of Anglia Square alone will require £1.276 million for phosphorus mitigation, and we have a relevant section 106 agreement in place for Anglia Square. Securing phosphorus mitigation through this route would be much cheaper than purchasing phosphorus credits on the open market. Loan repayment interest rates are likely to be around the Bank of England-based interest rate. To conclude, I formally propose we approve in principle the £3 million bridging loan facility from the AMF as set out, subject to what I've set out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Giles. Do I have a second, please? Councilor Padda. Does any Cabinet member wish to speak? No? Okay. As Councilor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item twenty is Extension of Contract with North's Environmental Waste Services for Processing Recyclable Material. So thank you very much, Adam. Just to say thank you. Go and have a drink afterwards. Not above encouraging you into bad ways. Councilor Hampton, would you care to move the report?
Yeah, thank you. This report today is asking for approval of an extension to the existing contract with North's Environmental Waste Services for use for materials recycling facility, Wex management service for recycling of co-mingled mixed recycled, i.e. blue bin material. The paper goes into a good amount of detail about the policy context, financial considerations and other risks that need to be taken into account and shaped our approach. So I'll try and keep this sort of brief and top level and just highlight a few points. But a number of nationwide measures that have been introduced and which will significantly reshape local waste and recycling services here over the coming years, as if we offer councils up and down the country, such as simple recycling reforms, national deposit return scheme and extended producer responsibility of packaging. And in response to this, we're reviewing our waste processing arrangements, especially the contract of use, which is a joint venture between the seven district councils and County Council in Norfolk. So we're proposing to extend the current use contract beyond the current expiry date of 1st December 2027 and for another three years to 30th of September 2030. This is an approach that should provide us with greater financial stability and ability to adapt to any further policy shifts as well as fluctuations in global commodity markets. It will allow for continued local management of recyclable materials at the Perth and Kosse, supporting local jobs. In the context of LGR, Local Government, the organisation, it will also allow its council and its successor, hopefully in due course, to thoroughly evaluate plan changes to waste legislation and policy before looking to come up with an appropriate longer-term arrangement. The proposed extension will be implemented through technical compliant arrangements within the joint venture, and all partner councils are currently in the process of seeking to approve the same extension. The recommendation that we support the extension of the contract as described and appoint relevant delegated authorities to make any required revisions is outlined in forward page 785 of the agenda pack, and I hope we can support this today as our other partners across Norfolk are seeking to do at the moment, and at least some already have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hampton. Do I have a second, please? Councilor Harper. Does any Cabinet member wish to speak? No, everybody's content. We've received no questions from political group leaders for this item, therefore we will now move to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. Item twenty-one, Annual Complaint Performance and Service Improvement Report. Councilor Jones, back to you. May I ask you please to present the report?
Thank you. This is the second year you're seeing this report, and it's a requirement that houses on business that we report this to Cabinet by the end of this month. The report is very detailed, it's necessary for us to illustrate compliance against the Ombudsman's Code of Practice, but also to reflect the amount of work we put into improving our services to residents, included in the package documents the full self-assessment. I'm pleased to say we do comply and have made improvements since our last report. As you know, I maintain the focus on overall service improvement in recent years, so I'm focusing on how we respond to complaints and put things right. And as I said earlier, I always own it when there's a need for improvement, and whilst I do agree, there is always more we can achieve. I think it's also important to highlight the significant improvements that have been made in this area, and particularly, I think that's a result of leadership within housing and how particularly the exec director has focused on this, and I'm really thankful for her input. The report details the improvements mainly from the past year. This performance has continued into this year. The first quarter this year, we've seen a continued reduction in complaints, with a 34% reduction at stage one and 51% reduction at stage two. Full response time has averaged improved. There's still more work to be done. Real focus on learning from complaints is something that we embedded, so they don't happen again and we stop escalation by resolving matters first time. I regularly meet with officers to receive updates on complaints and have real focus on lessons learned. I'm confident that the report and self-assessment reflects current complaint handling practice. Sadly, we are still finding that we're receiving results from the Ombudsman when they're determining cases against the council, and I think it's important to remember these are very old cases stemming from poor performance a few years ago. And whilst I don't want to diminish the importance of learning from these, it's often that we find these are areas where we're already considering improvements and have learning in place, and we continue, determined to continue on our trajectory of improving service standards across the housing department, communication and performance, and reducing the need for people to have to complain to us in the first instance. So I'd also like to just again thank the input pattern, the leadership team in housing, improving a culture of responsiveness and being more resident-focused, particularly in how we engage with people when they need to make complaints, more person-centred approach. And I think that that culture is becoming embedded throughout the team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. As Council... Does any Cabinet member wish to speak first? Oh, Councilor Hampton, yes.
Yeah, thank you. It's a really useful update and a lot of detail in this report, and it's clear that performance is going in the right direction. I'd just be interested to know a bit more about how as a member responsible for housing, what steps you can take to feel comfortable that the self-assessment does actually reflect where we are as a council, if that makes sense.
Thank you for the question. It's... We're really doing complaints regularly in our portfolio hold briefings, using complaints dashboard, RBI, where we can see things in real time, and there's an opportunity to drill down and get understanding of trends, and that often informs further bits of work and areas of development and further briefings that I might request based on that. We... It's... Yeah, there's a significant amount of work that goes on that's based on lessons learned from complaints, and having that overview and being able to see those trends and see what we need to address next. Yeah, it's something that's regularly addressed through portfolio hold briefings and also through discussions with the service and the exec director.
Thank you. Does any other Cabinet member wish to speak? No. In that case... We don't have a second. Shall we have a second, please? Councilor Hampton? Yes, sorry, I lost my place. I'm back on track now, I know where I am. So... No more Cabinet members wish to speak, so as Councilor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to his question will be provided tomorrow morning. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's unanimous. Item twenty-two is Delegated Authority to Award Preconstruction Service Agreement and the Main Design and Build Construction Contract for 67 New Homes at Mile Cross. This is great news. Councilor Jones, would you care to move the report?
There's someone who apparently loves hamantasins, I'm glad to be announcing. Really proud to bring this report, seeking delegated approval for two contracts that progress Mile Cross site, building 67 new homes. Remember, earlier this year we saw approval for enabling works on the site, and delighted to say that work is ongoing. These two contracts will help us progress the next stages of awarding contracts for initially the pre-construction service agreement to undertake technical design and define detailed costings. This will take about eight months, and then the main construction contract, which will be for two years. Total value of this is to be about £20 million, and it's an important next step in providing new homes. I think I just... Yeah, the details in that report, we know, we've seen the amazing designs going forward, and we're really... going forward, and we're really keen to progress it. I think I'd just like to address something that's been in the press recently, some of the misinformation that's been spread around this development, and as the portfolio holder, this sits within the H R A, this has never been a development that was done by anyone else or any other company, and we were always compared to procurement like this, and I think it's really, it's about homes, it's about people's lives and futures, and point scoring with it was really disappointing because I think it's exciting. And, yeah, I hope that there can be some clarification of how it's been misreported. But going back to the positives, I hope that everyone can agree it's important that we pursue the next steps. This is really important for both Mile Cross but also the wider city, that we have the opportunity to provide high quality homes for people that will be as sustainable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Yes, let's reinforce, this was always part of the H R A, it was never intended to be developed in any other way than to be put out to tender, as you are doing, as we're agreeing now, and those who suggested otherwise through the media are best disingenuous, I would say. councillor Harper?
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to sort of echo sentiments, really. I think it's been deeply unhelpful to, for councillors to have misrepresented this issue. Let's be generous to them, so they've misrepresented rather than being downright dishonest. But, you know, I do think that's, you know, it's been really unhelpful. Just in terms of the media coverage, I just also want, and it's pertinent to questions on this issue and questions that have been raised elsewhere on the agenda this evening, just want to be absolutely clear, the councillors shouldn't be saying that Lion Homes collapsed. Lion Homes has not collapsed. As an administration, we took steps to ensure that Lion Homes did not collapse, and I think it's really important that we, that we, you know, are clear about that. And I wonder whether, you know, I'd be keen for advice from the monitoring officer about whether it is a breach of standards for councillors to continue to, you know, make that erroneous statement, or whether it could be a breach of standards for councillors to, you know, continue to make that erroneous statement, because it is clearly not the case that Lion Homes collapsed. So I just think that's, that's an important point. I also just wanted to just congratulate councillor Jones and the officer team on getting this over the line. I know it's been an incredibly complex process, and I think it's, you know, it's taken longer than any of us would have hoped, but, you know, it's due to, down to the tenacity of everyone involved that it is moving forward, and I think that that's great news. I also just wanted to take this opportunity just to, because I think it is directly relevant to this site, just to express my frustration at the cancellation of improvement works to Mile Cross Road that have been called in to county, because I think that those upgrade works are materially important to this site, and I think it's deeply, deeply frustrating that once again, county council have chosen to deprioritise Norwich, and to deprioritise one of our poorest and most deprived communities sends a message that people in Mile Cross don't matter to the county administration, and I think that's absolutely shameful. And, you know, I hope it won't impact negatively on the people that will move into these brilliant new homes.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Harper. Points, many points well made. Jan, would you?
So just to respond to councillor Harper's query, all councillors must behave in honesty and integrity, and if members think that that is not the case, then they need to raise that directly with me and the officer to deal with.
Thank you, Jan. So, we need a second. councillor Giles?
I was just gonna, I know, I've spoken an awful lot tonight, but I was gonna say it was a really fantastic moment for the council to be getting to the stage where we're building sixty-seven new council houses in Mile Cross, a fantastic achievement. I know councillor Jones and officers have worked very hard to get to this stage. The opportunity of getting a secure tenancy in a highly energy efficient, genuinely affordable home is transformative to people's lives. We've seen how it's been transformative to the lives of people who moved into other developments in recent years in Norwich, and this is going to be fantastic for those sixty-seven households that get to move into this development.
We need a second, first. Could I have a second, please, and then we'll carry on. councillor Harper, I saw. councillor Jones?
I just wanted to add also, I just, anyone might remember the cabinet meetings we had where we had an amazing group of women come and perform for us, and I think, just as I'm being able to present this, I'm thinking we're getting closer to that opportunity to name a woman, a role after a woman, and I really hope that is within my tenure as portfolio holder. I really hope we get that opportunity. And also just that this is part of our ambition, we're taking challenging sites, you know, we've got, there's this, then there's Anglia Square, these are not easy sites to develop, and it shows that we're not prepared to back away from what's difficult, so, exciting.
I think it's fair to say that you are leading on a number of developments which will result in more social housing within this city. I think that's evidence that councillor Jones hates homelessness and loves good quality council housing, which is building. As councillor Cat has sent apologies, a written response to this question will be provided tomorrow morning, so shall we move to the vote on this report, please? All those in favour? Thank you, and well done, councillor Jones. Item twenty-three, it's still councillor Jones, the H R A Housing Revenue Account Capital Investment Contract, over to you.
This is the last one. So, this is to approve the award of two contracts for capital investment in the housing revenue account, total value of over two hundred million pounds. It's following the completion, tenure process is described in the report, and there's some exempted appendix. Over recent months, you'll be aware, colleagues, that I bought a number of short term contracts to you for approval to ensure business continuity. Today's report is what I've been waiting for, and we've had a rigorous and comprehensive procurement process, and this started with an engagement event in this chamber, probably about a year ago now, which I have the pleasure to attend. The process we've gone through, it shows the importance of these contracts, the H R A, and the importance we place on this future of our housing stock and having the right people involved to work on that, and crucially, the wellbeing of our residents. The council operates multiple capital investment contracts to undertake planned improvements to housing. Over the past eleven years, these contracts have been worth approximately twenty million pound each year. This report is awarding what were multiple contracts into two contracts, so this isn't new money, it's about consolidating that, it's spending what we have that's factored into our housing revenue count. The period is five years with a five year extension, and obviously given L G R on the horizon, it will be for any new council to reside future contracts. However, this first five years will enable new contracts to continue whilst the new council mobilises to ensure that services maintained and there's continuity for residents. The longer term nature of these contracts will allow for contractors to plan and develop services, and I hope this will have an impact on consistency of delivery, also support local employment. The H R A housing portfolio has been split into two contract lots to achieve a similar works value over the expected tenure contract duration. The contract areas use existing road boundaries or follow major roads, other naturally occurring geographical features such as the River Wensel. These contracts have been developed to ensure that services offered to our customers are delivered, delivered in the highest quality and standard of service that they should and will accept, whilst supporting us with our corporate strategy. So, as well as providing good quality homes and services, we have a role to play in helping to shape places and communities, and this is about providing opportunities for its customers in disadvantaged communities, also enhancing local environments, improving the health and wellbeing of all. So we're committed to strengthening social value through these contracts, and we expect this supply chain will meet social value commitments through the contract duration. I'm really, really excited about this, and I think it's about us being able to plan, we've got information about our stock now through stock condition surveys, and we're being able to make longer term plans that ensure that we need less responsive repairs, so having this in place will be really helpful. It will help us plan, and we won't have conversations about is there an understand or not, because works could be planned in a more consistent way. So I hope the Cabinet will support this, and I think this is probably the largest contract I will ever get to bring to Cabinet, so I'm incredibly proud to bring it.
More evidence of the enormous hard work you do to not just build but to improve social housing in the city path. So, first of all, do I have a second, councillor Giles? Does any cabinet member wish to speak on the above the line report? No. We've received no questions from political group leaders for this item. Does any member wish to speak on the exempt appendix? No, great, okay, thank you. In that case, we'll move to a vote. All those in favour? Unanimous, well done, Beth. Item twenty-four is exclusion of the public. I will move that we exclude the present public from the meeting during the consideration of items on the grounds that would involve a likely disclosure of exempt information as specified in part one of schedule twelve A of the local government act nineteen seventy-two, or it being confidential for the purposes of section one hundred and eighty-two of that act. Do I have a second, please? Anybody? Right, councillor Jones, thank you. All those in favour? Unanimous, thank you. We just came to go offline.